I'm going to call the meeting. March nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four, the regular meeting of the CMR Unified School District Board of Education to Order. Let the roll call reflect that everybody is here, say trustee Naby Renee. May I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
I move adoption of the regular meeting agenda for Tuesday, March nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four.
Second, it's been moved by Stewart, second by Santos, roll call vote, please. Stewart?
Aye.
Santos?
Yes.
Baum?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Kendell?
Yes.
Martin? Yes. Motion passes six zero. Before we approve the minutes tonight, I will let you know I found some corrections needed to be made. One was just a spelling error that we omitted a letter to salute under flag salute. And then on item number nine, we had Irene voting twice. And so I emailed. I emailed Raquel ahead of time, and so she has removed Irene from the absence list, and she is on the approval list, right, Raquel?
Yes, so I corrected them for Donna's approval signature on her copy.
So if anyone has any other corrections or concerns about the minutes? Seeing none, I'll take a motion.
I move adoption of the minutes for March, the regular meeting of March fifth, two thousand twenty-four.
Second, it's been moved by Stewart, second by Kendell for approval. Stewart?
Aye.
Kendell?
Aye.
Santos?
Yes.
Baum?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Martin? Yes, thank you, motion passes six zero. It's now time for public comment on closed session agenda items, seeing no one in our audience, we're going to close the floor to public comment, and we're going to adjourn to closed session at five forty-seven. Alrighty, hello, it's seven P M. Welcome, thanks for being here, the board's been in closed sessions since five forty-five, discussing all things confidential about the school district, and we're happy you're here. We're going to start with Dr. Fawcett introducing our flag salute host.
Alright, so I would like to invite Malaya up to the mic. And while you're walking up there, Malaya, I'm going to read something about you that your principal wrote for you, okay? So Malaya is a kindergartner at Branch Elementary, she loves learning, is helpful and kind, and she has so much fun with her classmates. Outside of school, Malaya enjoys spending time with her family and playing with her little sister and all of her cousins. Her favorite thing about Branch is going to the library, music on Fridays, and steam time in the class. We are so proud to have Malaya represent Branch Broncos. My, Malaya, the mic is yours.
Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, where liberty and justice for all.
That was wonderful, well done. So we're going to move on to communication. The first item on our communications agenda is items of interest from the board. Would anyone like to start us off?
I will. So the end of the year activities are starting, I'm looking forward to the dinner on Saturday for the AGHS boosters, and then the CTE dinner, April thirtieth, which is a Tuesday, I believe. That's always fun, the auction raising money for scholarships for our kids.
Anyone else? I just have a couple things. Just wanted to welcome both Donna and Irene have joined Vicky in finishing all of the Masters in Governance program. Congratulations, and thank you for taking the time to get the training to be the best board member you possibly can be.
Wonderful.
And in case you didn't know, on Friday, it's our superintendent's birthday, so just give him the plug out now.
Come on.
He's going to be a lot wiser after Friday.
Less hair.
Alright, superintendent's report.
Alright, thank you, President Martin. My first announcement is I just want to give a quick shout out to New Tech, they had their commodities night this past week, I was able to attend it, it was a packed house, the community showed up for them. And it's a great opportunity for the kids to learn about stock trading and commodities around the world, fantastic event for them. And then last week, we also had our last two days of a six-day training for our guiding coalition from each of our schools, both at the secondary and elementary level. It was phenomenal seeing the level of participation and interest and professional development that was taking place. Each school shared their journey maps on their journey through building these systems at their schools, and it was phenomenal. A lot of really great leaders and great educators. And then this Saturday, I'm excited to, or excuse me, this Sunday, I'm excited to go visit Napuma High School where the WASC visiting committee will be attending their first day of the visit, and it's going to be nice to see the board there as well, too. So thank you, that's it for me.
Awesome. Okay, we're going to move on to our consent calendar action items. But before we do that, I have to read my, my very important ditty, and I know some of you are going to have it memorized soon, even though I don't. Just want to remind you, there are speaker cards in the back, if you'd like to speak on any of our agenda items or items not on the agenda, they're yellow and blue. We interpreter, we have. Hi, Ms. Hernandez, thank you for being here. If you need interpreting services, please see Ms. Hernandez, and she will help you out. On the last pages of our printed agenda, our decorum standards are stated, and I want to thank, we have a new guide in our security team, which we all got to say hello to outside. Guidance about public comment. Public comments are an opportunity for members of the community to address the board of trustees in the meeting of the school board that is open to the public. Members of the public are encouraged to address the board concerning any item on the agenda or any item of interest within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board. Public comments are limited to at the most three minutes and no more than twenty minutes total for one subject matter under discretion of the presiding officer. The board will not take any action or have discussion on any item not appearing in the posted agenda, except as authorized by law. This is why the board does not respond during public comment section of our agenda. It is important to recognize that opinions and comments shared here are those of the individual speakers and may not represent the views of our district, the board, or our staff. Luciemar is committed to fostering an inclusive, welcoming, and safe environment at our meetings and our schools. We respect everyone's right to express their ideas and opinions. All remarks must be free from personal attacks, particularly those based on legally protected categories such as race, religion, disability, or sexual orientation. Our district is dedicated to serving and nurturing all our students, guiding them to become responsible, ethical, and productive members of society. To honor this mission, please make sure your comments avoid profanity, demonstrate tolerance towards differing viewpoints, and exhibit exemplary conduct. Our students are watching and learning from us at all times. Please be aware that any disturbance or intentional interruption of a meeting is not permissible. In accordance with recently, recently enacted laws, excessive disruption by any individual or group will result in the board president evoking the individual or groups privileged to address the board. Disruptive participants may be warned and, if necessary, removed from the meeting. We value your participation in the public meeting of the Board of Education, and thank you for your cooperation in maintaining the efficiency, effectiveness, and civility of Luciemar. And I know it doesn't pertain to any of you, but we got to say it every single time, because there's been times when it hasn't happened. So thank you. So we're going to move on to our consent calendar action items, it's items one through nine. Does anyone on the board have any questions about any of those items? No? I'm opening it to public comment, would anyone in the audience like to comment on items one through nine? Seeing none, I'm going to close it to the public and bring it back to the board for any concerned comments? No, then I'd accept the motion.
I move approval of consent calendar items one through nine.
Second, it's been motion by Stewart, second by Santos to approve items one through nine, roll call vote, please. Stewart?
Aye.
Santos?
Yes.
Baum?
Mayor? Yes.
Kendell?
Yes.
Martin? Yes. Items pass six zero. Well, look at that, we're already halfway through. Okay, we're, we're moving on to reports and presentations, resolutions, and proclamations. Item number ten, school site presentation, Branch Elementary.
Alright.
You are beaten again. Got it, okay.
Let me introduce you, so this is Principal Whitney Whitney, she's from Branch Elementary, obviously, and she has her team here supporting her in the audience. And tonight, they're going to be presenting on Bright Futures, PTO, and Grandparents Club, Staff Supports, and PLC. And if you just click on the slide.
There we go.
There we go.
Alright, thank you. Good evening, board members, thank you for having us this evening. I'm honored to stand before each of you to showcase the remarkable achievements and successes from our beloved Branch Elementary. With your support and guidance, we have made significant strides in fostering a nurturing and conductive learning environment for our students. Our branch mission is to ensure that all students learn at high levels. As Ms. Dr. Fawcett presented, the four items that we're going to discuss and highlight tonight, Bright Futures, PTO, our Grandparents Club, the Staff Supports, and the PLC. Let me, oh, this is the first day of school. We're all so bright and cheery and shiny. Thank you all. Don't they look the same? Here in March.
No, they're way more time now.
Here's a few of our members that support our Bright Futures and YMCA. I'd like to highlight the, the brilliance of our Bright Futures program before and after school. This program stands as a place to call home for many of our students, offering them not only academic enrichment, but also a safe and engaging space for them to thrive beyond the school hours. What truly sets our program apart is the dedication of our teaching staff. With over half of them leading their expertise and support for these classes, this level of commitment speaks volumes about our collective compassion for our holistic development for our students. And so those that are a part of the before and after school, would you just stand just to see? Who? And Ms. Johnson? So it really is, it really is, if you look at our numbers, some of them, yes, are doing before and after school, but we have over half of our staff. We have twelve general education teachers, we have two intervention teachers, one RSP teacher, and one PE teacher. So that really is a lot of us that are here for our students before and after the school day. I am delighted to share and shine the light on our invaluable contributions of our parent-teacher organization, our PTO, and our Grandparents Club. These dynamic groups serve as a backbone for our school community. They're tireless working, they tirelessly work behind the scenes to provide resources, organize events, and offer support in countless ways. Their dedication exemplifies the spirit of collaboration and partnership that defines our school culture. So our Grandparents Club also supports around the district, but they come in, they support in the classrooms, they're in our library, they help with school-wide events, and they enrich the lives of our students. Our PTO really is truly in tune with our staff, they support whole school events, and they want, some of those events are the Bronco Stampede, our talent show, and the many fundraisers. Our staff and our creative approaches, I must commend our exceptional teaching staff and our, with not only our certificated, but our classified staff for their commitment to our school's mission to ensure that all students learn at high levels. Each day, they go above and beyond to ensure that students receive the support and guidance that they need to excel academically. We are excited about our school and how we demonstrated strong growth in the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three CASP assessments. Our staff's efforts are not only commendable, but also instrumental, instrumental in shaping our students to be the future leaders of tomorrow. So back in two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three, we really did maximize our student supports and created tailored interventions. We implemented the workshop models with math and daily five, which is our reading block of time, and then also differentiated instruction for all students, and also the departmentalizing of sixth grade. This led us to exceptional CASP scores, and then as we look beyond that, so what next? We really want to be looking outside of our site for best practices, and then utilizing resource, resources and strategies that have worked, and then also trusting our knowledgeable staff. And little quick snapshot of where we are in comparison to our district, but also just the growth that we've made since COVID and beyond, so. Last but certainly not least, the PLC, as we come off the tails of our PLC Academy, we really are thrilled to share our progress in implementing the professional learning communities. We, these collaborative teams meet weekly when we have our LSM, our Late Start Mondays, and it really, it supports with our teaching staff to engage in meaningful dialogue, share best practices, and refine their instructional approaches one step at a time. We've begun to focus on those four essential questions. This is a snapshot of what it looks like for our collaborative teams when they're meeting together. This is what we would say their agenda, what they're focusing on, who's in attendance, and looking at items for them to be discussing. So those four essential questions are, what do we expect our students to learn? How will we know when they've learned it? And how will we respond when they don't learn it? And then how will we respond when they do know it? By fostering a culture of continuous learning and growth, we are better equipped to meet the diverse needs of our students and uphold our commitment to excellence. In conclusion, the successes of our school are a testament to the dedication and passion, at the end of the day, exhaustion, of our collective efforts and our share of our shareholders' involvements. As we look forward to the future, we aim to continue to build upon these accomplishments, striving for excellence in all that we do. With your continued support, I'm confident that our school will continue to shine brightly in encouraging our students for the path, path of success for generations to come. So thank you.
Principal Whitney, stay on up here.
You're not done yet.
Principal Whitney, stay, stand up here in case we have any questions from the board.
I'm done, there will be no more questions. Questions, hold on.
Does anyone from the board have any questions for Principal Whitney?
So sixth grade, departmentalize, what subjects?
Ms. Johnson. Ms. Johnson is in the room, she teaches ELA and science, and then Ms. Howell teaches mathematics and social studies.
Nice.
Nice.
There's, there's. It makes a huge difference. Huge difference, yeah.
Any other questions? Does anyone from the audience have any questions? This is report only, and if you have any questions about the presentation from Branch? Seeing none, I'm going to close it to the audience, bring it back, if anyone has any comments?
Yeah.
Trustee Baum?
Wonderful scores. Thank you. Thank, thank you. Yes, thank you.
Ms. Santos?
Yes, I live next door to a grandparent whose child goes there, and she's just so excited. She says it's, we're seeing such a fun school, and her granddaughter just loves it. And it's, what she sees in her is what you guys have produced. So thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Well, I had a couple things. First off, I thought it was great, that your staff photo, everyone's wearing their lanyard and their ID, which I noticed those kind of things. And you taught me a new, you taught me a new acronym, LSM, Late Start Monday. I'm going to use that at my school. And then also just wanted to comment about the Grandparents Club, a lot of those people are my cohorts. And I'm sorry, but Ms. Milhouse is in the Grandparents Club over at Harlem, too, so, you know, I don't know. How many Grandparents Clubs can women be in around here? But I think it's a great idea, and I think it's a great way to start kind of an, an idea of alumni support for each school. So I'm sure principals talk to other principals about, hey, this is a good idea, you should do it, so. Alright, anyone else, comments? Well, thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Okay, we're going to move on to item number eleven, report alternative graduation pathway implementation of ed code number five, one, two, two, five, dash thirty-one, and this is for Ms. Dixon.
Thank you, President Martin. I am pleased to welcome Special Education Director Tisha Quam to take us through this report. What we'll be sharing this evening is updates to ed code that we are currently working on for implementation for certain students who have IEPs with very certain conditions. So we'll take you through that this evening. I'll hand it over to Ms. Quam.
Thank you, thank you for having me this evening and allowing me to talk about this new charge to create a pathway to a diploma for our students with disabilities. So our California Department of Education has funded a work group of various stakeholders, and those stakeholders were tasked to identify barriers to our students that our students with disabilities face in earning a high school diploma. And so looking at our California dashboard, really since the beginning, we have had a, identified our students with disabilities as a group with the lowest graduation rate compared to all of our other measured groups. And so that was one of the reasons why this task force even came about. They identified three groups of students with disabilities. The primary focus of the current law, which we are focused on creating a path for right now, are our students with significant cognitive disabilities. We also, the other two groups that they looked at are students with moderate to support needs, and our students, the majority of our students with disabilities, who do go on to get a high school diploma. So the vision of this work group is really to, for all students with disabilities to enter high school, knowing that they have the opportunity to earn a high school diploma. And the goal is to increase post-secondary and employment opportunities for adults with disabilities. So in looking at the completion pathways, it's where it looks purple up there, but it's blue on the screen here. We have three pathways that we are talking about, two are currently in place, so the gray pathway is really our traditional diploma, and many of our students with disabilities actually achieve diplomas through this pathway. We have the certificate of completion pathway where currently our students with significant cognitive disabilities do usually obtain a certificate of completion and then go on to transition services until age twenty-two. Now AB one eighty-one, the new law has, we have, this pathway is in development, it's the alternate diploma pathway, and it is for students who are eligible, who are eligible for the alternate assessment, and they also are in standards-aligned coursework, so all of these things are in development right now that we are working on, and this would allow them to receive an alternate diploma. Onto the next thing, these are the laws and the ed code and the board policies that kind of govern our work right now, what we are doing. AB one eighty-one is the alternate diploma pathway available to students that entered in the ninth grade. This actually went into effect in June of two thousand twenty-two. So students that entered in the ninth grade in twenty-two, twenty-three, or later are basically eligible for this new diploma pathway. So their IEPs would need to call for the fact that they're eligible to take alternative assessments, and their IEPs would need to show that they are completing, they have a course of study, that they're completing state standards-aligned coursework. Once these students meet these requirements, they're eligible, eligible to receive a regular diploma, and by completing that alternate coursework aligned to the statewide graduation requirement coursework. This pathway of students are also still eligible to receive services up until their age twenty-two. So that is what is unique about this diploma pathway. Usually when a student receives a diploma, that ends their, our obligation and to, for special education services, and then they go on to their adult life. This diploma pathway allows them to continue with services. So our next steps in terms of this are to examine expectations and challenges and barriers, create new courses in special education to align with updated course structure that follows graduation requirements. We are working on those course codes right now and course descriptions. Work with instructional staff to determine whether additional standards-aligned curriculum is needed, and then provide training for teachers to map the course of study for all students, including those in the alternative pathway. So with that, as I'm sure, I mean, when I first heard all this, I had so many questions, so I don't know if you do, but there's an opportunity to ask questions.
Trustee Stewart?
Could you talk about the timeline of a complete rollout, if there is such a thing as a complete rollout?
Absolutely. Yes, yes. So we are looking at having this all ready to go in fall of two thousand twenty-four, and that is pretty much in line with all of the districts in our Selpa right now, or within our county. We're all kind of have followed this path in a similar time, and everybody is looking at pretty much having this pathway developed by fall of two thousand twenty-four.
If I may add just one thing, this is a very small group of students in our high schools in this moment, there are seven students that this applies to. And so they are currently sophomores, freshmen and sophomores. And so what we're really doing is looking at existing courses and the selection of course, existing course titles and the selection of courses that they take, and making sure they are appropriately updated, and looking, as you can see, at these next steps with any additional curricular supports that they might need to achieve at the level that is now identified. So we have had a little bit of time to do this, and it will be sorted out by the fall. So the board will likely see some updated course titles coming with new courses that we usually do.
And is the plan to do an annual review of this, or just where this will be it, and we'll just monitor from there?
Well, I think that like any new thing, we're going to have to review it routinely to make sure that our courses that we design are appropriate for the aims that we are looking to achieve. We are expecting coming down the road additional legislation in this area, which will, when, and if that passes, require additional work. So this will be something that we will likely be revisiting for the next years to come, to ensure that we have a really great set of options for our high school students.
Thank you, thank you.
So in, in that, let's say, just throwing out incidents out there, algebra one, which is required by the state to graduate, a modified class, but we only have seven students, so it's not like they have separate classes, those classes would be under umbrella of a different class, too, right?
Correct, and what we're really looking at is our students, most of these students are in our intensive programs right, right now, and taught by a special day class teacher. And so we are looking at at that teacher having basically nested, nested courses within their purview to teach. And so students would be basically in all of these courses for, throughout their high school career. So we're mapping that out right now in terms of what courses they need to take.
And, and I'm assuming there's some requirement to notify these families that this option is available to them early in the process?
Absolutely, and so we, in terms of our transition planning for our students in high school, or when they're, when they reach sixteen or earlier, we talk about that this is actually part of the IEP processes, part of the IEP forms, and something that we address when we're going through IEPs.
Any other questions from the board?
So will they have the, until the age of twenty-two to accomplish this, is that what?
They actually would accomplish their, the high school diploma pathway within the four years typically. They could take longer, but they will still be eligible for services for transit, for our transition program until they're age twenty-two.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, I'm going to open it up to questions from the audience. Anyone have questions about this item? Item number eleven. Seeing none, I'm going to close it to the audience, bring it back to the board. Any comments from the board? Well, thank you, I think this is great. I think that, you know, giving a little bit more incentive to a few more of our students to get a high school diploma is probably a good thing.
I think it's also, sorry if I just make another comment, in line with what's happening in a lot of our colleges and universities, there's a lot of pathways for students at college level, students with disabilities to obtain other certificates and things like that. So I think it's really, I don't know, I like the fact that it's just providing that equity for them.
Great, thank you so much. And we move on to item number twelve, report first reading, curriculum adoption, Transitional Kindergarten, High Scope Third Edition, two thousand sixteen. Ms. Dixon?
There's something kind of wonderful to talk about high school graduates, and then also move just directly into Transitional Kindergarten, which is a wonderful growing program in Luciemar. As part of that growth, we have found a need to review with our TK team all sorts of the curriculum that they have been using, and work to find something that is available to all teachers that will be equitable for all of our students. So to take us through this report is my great pleasure to introduce our teacher on special assignment, Shelby West.
Good evening. Right, so to provide some context first for how we arrived at the curriculum choice we bring to you today, I wanted to first mention that our TK curriculum exploration started by reviewing the California Department of Education guidance on choosing developmentally appropriate curricula, which includes their recommendation for play-based learning, and also those eight overarching principles that you see there in that beautiful rainbow. With an understanding of this guidance, we held a publisher's fair where TK teachers were able to hear from several companies offering early learning curricula, and teachers received sample lessons and materials from all publishers to try in their classrooms before voting on which curriculum to. And teachers received sample lessons and materials from all publishers to try in their classrooms before voting on which curriculum to pilot. So, we also referenced a report from the Head Start organization to inform our choices that we brought into the publisher's fair as well. And one of the most highly rated was the High Scope preschool curriculum, foreshadowing on what the teachers chose. So, after exploring the samples and rating information, the teachers chose High Scope to pilot in depth. We had a team of teachers representing schools from the five cities and the Pomo areas, and their feedback to the pilot was very positive. As you can see here, the teachers particularly liked that this curriculum provides guidance for child-centered learning that is developmentally appropriate for our youngest learners. So, to give a brief overview, the curriculum consists of three components. The first component is a set of curriculum books that provides teacher guidance for supporting student growth in eight developmental domains, including language and literacy, math, social, emotional, and physical development, among others. And there are lesson plans to start the school year strong, and also developmental charts that describe what children are able to do at different stages and then next steps to support instruction. The second component helps teachers create a classroom environment that is conducive to learning through play. And then, the third component and final component consists of activities addressing all domains of learning, but including descriptive lessons that build children's math skills, their literacy, and introduces them to STEM and music and much more. So, thank you for your time, and I am happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the school board on this? And what school has started this already?
So, the pilot schools were Branch Elementary, their TK teacher, Shell Beach Elementary, Grover Heights, Lang, and Oceanville.
Trustee Stewart.
Can you remind us where the materials are for public review, where they can be found?
Great question. They can be found right out there in the hallway on the left-hand side. Look for the bright yellow stuff.
And this is the first report. We'll be bringing this back to the board for hopeful approval at the April meeting. So, in the interim, the materials will move to the curriculum office and will be on public display until our next board meeting.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
I was just thinking about setting up the classroom. So, are you getting supported in setting up the classrooms?
Yes. So, our new classrooms are getting like a complete setup. And we're looking at the environmental rating scale, which is a system that designs, you know, developmentally appropriate classrooms for our existing classrooms that already usually had the furniture they needed. TK teachers were given $5,000 to spend through Lakeshore on things like manipulatives, you know, unit blocks, anything that they felt was necessary to promote those things.
And that was really wonderful because the state did something great, which is to give each district universal pre-kindergarten funding that we use for this curriculum adoption and some of those supplies that Ms. West described.
Yeah, wouldn't be saying that out loud at your staff meeting, like, he's a fucking.
It was a great time to reinvest in TK because we wanted to make sure that not only did our new classrooms get fully set up because a TK classroom is not always exactly the same as a kindergarten classroom, and it's certainly very different than a first-grade classroom. But for our existing TK, we thought it was only fair that they got to get a few upgrades to ensure that teachers and students had equitable access to the appropriate materials.
Any other questions from the board? I'm gonna open it up for public comment. This is a first reading report only on the curriculum adoption transitional kindergarten High Scope Third Edition, which is in the back hallway if you'd like to look at it. Anyone have any public comments? Seeing none, I'm gonna close it and bring it back for comments from the board. Any other comments from the board? Well, I'd love that the rainbow had play. Because that's what they need to do, is play with each other, play, you know? And I know after all we've experienced with COVID, it's so important to get those kids socializing again. So, well, thank you, and I'm sure the pilot will be great. So, appreciate it. This is the first reading, so we have to vote on that one. Item number 13. Report Discussion Regarding Potential Decomposed Granite Track at Oshano Elementary School Continued Upon Outside Funding Sources. Mr. Eichberger.
Thank you, President Martin. This evening before you, I have a discussion item. And I will go back a little ways and talk about where this energy started. So, Oshano, as most of you know, is a neighborhood school. Meaning that most of the families walk to the school and/or are short distance, and there is a sense of community. And as part of the review of Oshano, the Oshano Community Service District started discussing the safe paths to school and other elements related to the community. And they realized there are some things that are not the same as access to other sites. When we think about Arroyo Grande High School and this beautiful track that people that live close have the ability to walk to after hours and access under the civil. It's, I did it. It's the civil, oh, man. Jumped around too much.
Field act. The field act.
It's okay. Thank you. The field act. Ultimately, we leave one of our gates open for what we call pedestrian access outside of school hours. And someone that wants to walk on the track when students aren't using it for track or other events, they have access to that as a community access point. So, when we think about Oshano, they don't have a track within walking distance. And the Community Service District created a Parks and Rec Committee. And one of the things that they discussed was this idea of a walking track. And there is some prime real estate known as the grass field at Oshano Elementary. Meaning it's a huge field, one of our larger elementary sites. It's nice and flat. And there was discussion about whether or not there would be interest in having a walking path that could also then become an outdoor learning that would be possible for PE to use, and our students would have access to it as well. So, the thing that I would like to note is that there, at this time, is no money assigned to this. Really, this is a discussion to see if the board would be interested in us as a district approving there to be fundraising to occur. And as money becomes available, then a walking track at Oshano Elementary could be something that would be brought back to the board as a future item for board approval.
Any questions from the board or for Mr. Eichberger regarding this, Ms. Santos? Would the county be involved in this since it is in the county area?
That is one of those, I like to use my lawyer answer, it depends. Meaning the funding, if the county was going to support, would be something that they would have to determine how they would fund. Meaning they don't have a funding set aside for it as well. And they, because it would be within the purview of the district, they wouldn't have, say, in terms of what that walking track would look like or anything like that. It would be a design that was developed from the school district and input to this, from the school district.
Because sometimes, since it is a county, you know, in the county, there's voters in the county, and it's for their purpose too. And I think with Oshano Services District, you know, working with, since they now have this park and rec thing, I don't see why they wouldn't be interested in maybe a couple of dollars here and there. You know, since it does help with their citizens and so forth. Because it's not just for the younger, I mean, the older group could use it also. So, it's another area for recreational purposes they could use.
That would definitely be something that should the board decide that they would like us to start doing a little bit more research and then potentially fundraising for this. That would be something that we could review as an option.
I can remember back in the day when I was working to try to get the skateboard park in Grover. We went through Arroyo Grande, Grover, Pismo, and we did go to the county park and rec, and we did get funds from them too.
Oh, make a note.
Any other questions? Trustee Stewart.
I know we're in the casual conversation phase, but I'm just curious if part of the conversation is the hours of use that are permitted, especially from a student safety point of view? Of who would get to use an on-campus track and when?
So, it would still be bound by our normal school facilities, meaning gates are locked when school, when school is in session. So, when we think of that first bell, when our transitional kindergarten students are getting dropped off through the end of the school day, when they're being released either to parents with the bus or to walk home with siblings. The, the gates would be locked, meaning people are not able to access the track during that time. If we use AG as an example, the same thing can be said, meaning people are not coming on to visit and use that facility during the school day. So, the, the gate, the one pedestrian gate is typically opened after the students are released, and then it is locked typically within a half hour of sunset by the site custodian or someone at the site, meaning when the sun goes down, the gates are locked, the campus is closed.
Great, thank you. And the reason I ask that too is if we're gonna ask if other outside groups are gonna fundraise, I want them to have a realistic expectation of when they can use, even if they're putting, even if they skin in the game. Great, thanks.
Question for you, Mr. Eichberger. So, this is just a conceptual idea, like, do we want to support a track that possibly we don't pay for, but we're gonna give the land and the guidance on it on our property regarding that and joining in with possibly the CSD and what other fundraising groups want to be part of this? Is that correct?
Exactly.
Just wanted to make the comments clear. Any other questions from the board? I'll open this up to public comment. If anyone would like to comment on this item, a discussion, just a casual discussion regarding potential DG track at Oshano Elementary School. Come to the podium if you'd like to ask a question. If you, you need to come to the podium and share your comment.
And so, we can capture your voice?
Yeah.
Great, thanks.
Hello?
Hi.
Have you talked, maybe reached out to Eagle Scouts? Is that where they do a big project? So, that might be something an Eagle, Boy Scout could do. Might be good.
I think we're just in the inception idea right now.
So, if, if the board generally has consensus around this item, the next steps would be to reach back out to the Oshano Community Service District. They will begin fundraising for it and reaching out, and then our local PTO chapter, along with the principal, would also be reaching out to begin fundraising as well. So, they'll, they'll connect with the other service groups as needed.
Is there any other public comment from the audience? Seeing none, I'm gonna close to the audience, bring it back for board comments. I really want to, this isn't a vote, but I'd like to see if you're open to this idea, and we can just hand it over to Mr. Eichberger, Mr. Stinson, to continue as our liaisons for. Obviously, we haven't benefited any budget. We have the land, so let them come with everything else.
It would be an improvement to the school.
Yeah. I think it would be a tremendous benefit to the community. A lot of the streets in Oshano don't have curb scuders and sidewalks, and as people are older, uneven surfaces are very difficult for them. So, being able to trust an even surface for a daily walk around a couple laps would make a lot of sense. And I think anything to bring more people into that sense of community for Oshano is a great idea.
I, I want to say also that I know that this school is such a community center and hub in Oshano. And so, I really like the idea of the community coming together to partner with the district in, in providing more services. So, yeah, it would support this.
Anything else? I'm, I'm glad to see that they're forming a park and recreation group in that area too, because there's so many kids from Oshano and part of Grover that, that use that school. I know we practices like baseball and soccer, we use those fields a lot. So, to have this is just another added recreation for them.
Trustee Stewart.
But I, I all supportive of this too. Just a request that if we see this again, and when we see this again, could we also have information about the cost of maintenance of what a track would be? Because that would, that would hit our general fund. Or might.
And one more comment. We did spend about three years making the drainage a little bit better over there.
On the counting time.
Any other comments? Do you have enough direction, Mr. Eichberger?
I do. Thank you, President Martin.
Okay, great. That was item number 13, and now we're gonna move on to item number 14. Report Approval Fiscal Year 2022-24 Second Interim Financial Report. Mr. Eichberger gets to stay up and be our star.
Thank you. I am not the star. I'm the spokesperson. The star, however, is sitting in this room, and I do want to extend the hugest possible thanks to Director Seabert. Hiding back there, almost in the back row, and a huge round of applause because she does not get the public kudos enough for the work that she does, nor does the, the business department that supported the generation of the second interim. So, I, I did want to take a moment. I am just presenting a great budget outlook as it pertains to Lucium R. And I say that because I'm also going to talk about some not great budget outlooks as it relates to the state. So, a reminder, this is the second interim budget, and ultimately, that is another snapshot in time. That has been our theme this year, that our interim budgets are snapshots in time. Ultimately, the second interim captures all amendments to the budget that you as a board passed back in June. Or if we think of fiscal year, starting July 1 through January 31st. And it is meant to be that current fiscal outlook that captures not only changes that are based on the governor's January budget, but also those changes in revenues as we start looking at attendance and other things that have impacted our budget. So, one of the first things that I would like to point out is a change since first interim is you'll notice our October seabeds date changed a little bit. Meaning when we actually had our certified data for seabeds, it went down two students. Now, this is the date when we go back to October 4th that certified. And ultimately, as a reminder, this is a great thing because it's up well above what our assumptions were last year. Another spoiler that you'll hear about a little bit later is our attendance. And ultimately, district-wide, our attendance is also still up. Now, I will share it's down slightly from when I reported last, meaning at the time, it was still early in the year. We hadn't hit those, you know, rough months of winter when the, I like to call it the plague makes its way, not only through the schools, but home with the kiddos. And our attendance at that time was 94.86%. And right now, our current year-to-date is 93.7. Now, I know that's a drop. However, that is an improvement from last year. Meaning we are up 2.6% if we compare just year-to-date through month 7, current year versus year-to-date month 7 of last year. So, a direct apples-to-apples comparison, we are up over 2.5%, which is awesome and plays into that revenue change that I talked about a little bit. Another change, not so bright and warm, is our out-year colas have been adjusted. So, you'll notice I've highlighted them in red. That's so that you can see them and also because they're bad. When we think of danger signs, red typically is an illustration of we need to pay attention to this. Ultimately, the out-year colas have changed or been reduced, and it ultimately is impacting our out-year expected revenues. Meaning we are going to anticipate over those two out-years, over 8 billion, or I'm sorry, $8 million less in funds to the district as part of our estimates. Now, what could possibly happen because these numbers are low? Well, back to my lawyer answer, it depends. Meaning there is a gap in what the deficit the governor says we have compared to what the Department of Finance says we have. But we don't know. What we can anticipate is that those out-year colas are going to remain the lower number that we used during second interim. Those came directly from the School Services DART Board and have been endorsed by the Department of Finance as the numbers that we should be using. And, uh, we have heard some rumors that there could also be talk of, uh, what's called a zero cola, no cola. Meaning for 2425, even though statutorily, it could be set at somewhere between, between 7.6% and 1%, the state can choose to not fund that cola. Meaning they can say, even though, uh, that's what the statute says it is, we're not going to fund it because the state is running such a deficit and we need to recoup, uh, some of the money that, or, or not spend some of the money that we said we were going to. Now, you might be thinking that'll never happen. It actually did. The last time, uh, there was a zero cola was 2016-17. So not that far in the rearview. And even worse news, if you go back to 2010, 2011, we think about those terrible, absolutely terrible riff years, there was actually a negative cola in that school year. So I, I bring that to you as a, it's red, it's a caution, we should be paying attention to it. Now, when we think about those projected, uh, down colas, why is that? Well, there is a deficit that we knew coming into second interim. One of the things that has changed since first interim is the first two months of revenue have come in from the state, meaning they're starting to look at what their tax receipts are, what their withholdings are for pay, and they're down. Ultimately, we don't know exactly how far below their expectations and what the impact to the educational budget will be yet. However, I guarantee by mid-May, they will have it figured out. Ultimately, uh, we have also made a tweak to our declining enrollment trend since first interim. Meaning at first interim, we were anticipating, yes, we're up current year, but based on our 10-year trend data, we had anticipated 150 students enrollment drop or decrease next year. What we've done since first interim is we recalculated or we benchmarked our declining enrollment. So we shifted to a five-year average and you might be thinking, well, that's not the smartest thing because one of those years was this huge drop related to COVID. Well, we figured that that is an anomaly of a year. And what we did was we averaged those other four years, came up with that 150 mark, used that data for the COVID year. And ultimately what that did was it changed our declining enrollment trend to closer to 110 students. So a revision for second interim is we are anticipating a decline of 110 students next year and then 112 students in the out-year, if you chose, uh, to read that nice, awesome giant, uh, budget book that Rhonda and the business department created. Hopefully did, there's some great stuff in there. As I also shared, our attendance, uh, average is up, meaning we're hovering between that, uh, 33 to 34% range. One of the things that we've updated in terms of our, our assumptions related to revenue is at first interim, we had 93% as our ADA average for all three years. And what we've done is a stepped increase. Meaning we're keeping current year at 93 because we haven't hit P2 yet. However, we are anticipating a slight increase, so it's going to go up to 3.25 next year and then three point, I'm sorry, 93.5 in 2526. Other good news is our UPP, our unduplicated pupil percentage has remained strong and is still above 60%. You'll notice I did highlight something in green. This is tied to an item that you have a little bit later today. And it is an assigned compensation increase for all employees groups. Ultimately, you will be hearing about the AB 1200 from me shortly related to a tentative agreement with our teachers association. And then Dr. Handy will be bringing that tentative, our, uh, agreement to you for approval shortly thereafter. And when we developed our budget, we built in that assignment of that 5%. That way, we had an accurate picture for second interim of what the budget really is. It did keep, uh, that idea of a reduction of five teachers using attrition and retirement. Uh, and also fully funding our routine restricted maintenance and deferred maintenance so that our buildings, we can maintain the great, uh, facilities that we've invested so much money in with Measure I. In terms of some shifts of funding, this was planned shifts in terms of our intervention teachers and our instructional aides. Meaning when the COVID dollars flooded in, we developed a spending plan. And in current year, we have our intervention teachers and our instructional aides in LCAP. Next year, they'll be in learning recovery and then they'll be back in LCAP. So this is just, uh, changing the funding of where those are based on the spending plan. And the last thing is you'll notice when we cover the picture of the NYPD or the numbers that you're looking for, uh, in the reserves for economic uncertainty in purple when we get there. Ultimately, uh, you might be thinking, well, excess reserves, what are they? What does it look like as a, a dollar amount? What does it look like as a percentage? So excess reserves are those reserves that are saved for future economic uncertainty, such as, uh, decline in our out-year cola or changes in ADA. And this is above that 3% minimum reserve that we are required to have under SB 152. Friendly reminder, that 3% reserve is only about two weeks of payroll for the district.
Oh, look at he learns, he learns.
Sneaking it in early. Uh, ultimately, when we think about that amount, you'll notice, hey, th- those reserves are going down. And that is planned, right? It's a planned spend down of those excess reserves. And it's tied to everything from that 5% compensation increase to changes to how much we're paying for toilet paper and paper towels. So it's everything from the day-to-day supplies to also how we compensate our employees. But ultimately, uh, it does show that we are intentionally spending down those reserves. What does it actually look like? This is what I like to consider in terms of one picture, the holy grail of the documents. It is the actual full snapshot, also known as the NYPD or multi-year projection. And it shows those items that I talked about. So the change in cola, that's that red arrow at the top saying those numbers are going down. The highlighted green, that is highlighting the raises. And then the purple, as I said, below, uh, at the end is our mandated, or above our mandated reserves. So the excess, uh, reserves for economic uncertainty. I know I've been going super fast. Any questions about the NYPD or anything I've covered so far? So what does that mean? Great news, positive certification. This is where we clap again for Rhonda. And it's the caveat though. Those storms, those unknown, uh, projections are just an assumption, right? It is what we know today. What we're putting into our budget is what we think will happen and that is the projection. So we will continue to review all of those articles that are coming from, uh, school services. We will look very closely at our P2 ADA, meaning P2, the attendance period ends Friday. And there will be, uh, a month, might even be a month and a half where we clean up the data and figure out what date ranges are the best for us in terms of our actual revenue. And that will continue to occur until it has to be certified and submitted and certified. We will very closely watch the governor's May revision. And we'll also be watching those currents in terms of what are the, what is the economy showing? What do the month's revenues and tax withholding show as we start to develop the draft fiscal budget that will come before you? End of May, beginning of June. Now we get to the questions.
Questions from the board? Anyone on the board have questions? I just had one question. I noticed you had built in the attrition of five FTE teachers. Um, do we have an estimate for how many of our teachers will be retiring?
Excellent question. I would, uh, defer to Dr. Handy for the specific number. Uh, however, I will say that while we use the term retirement for those five attrition, we do also have some people that leave the district.
Right. We probably have five that just leave because their spouse got a job someplace else or whatever. Right.
Are you asking for this year or what we project?
Kind of feeling about how many people might be retiring this year yet?
We've received retirement notices, I believe, from four, uh, certificated teachers. Um, and then we have a spattering of other. Could, give me a few seconds, I could look at more and then.
No, no, I'm just curious. I mean, at least we'll, let's hit, I would say it probably takes 10 to leave to fit the right mark with the attrition. Just because, but subjects, grade levels, all that kind of stuff.
We'll provide a more detailed update on vacancies and retirements down the road. Yep.
Yeah. Any other questions from the board regarding this item? Okay, this is a report and approval. So if anyone in the audience would like to make public comment on this item, item number 14, the fiscal year 2023-24 second interim financial report. I'm sure you've been reading it while we've been here. Seeing none, I'm going to close it to a couple of comments from the audience, bring it back to the board for comments.
Just a couple of comments, uh, one, starting with my thanks again. I mean, it's such an easily accessible document. I especially appreciate the executive summary. Um, and I just want to sort of, I know we're all cautiously optimistic and I really just, I'm just looking to highlight the section that puts not in the proposed budget. And I know no deferrals yet currently, but I know the D word is being sort of bandied around in, in Sacramento. So I'm hoping that that stays where it is. Um, I'm hoping like there's some pension relief. I know the STIRS is flat, but I know PERS is an increasing year-over-year for the next three years. Um, I'm also cautiously optimistic when it comes to attendance because I know the CDC guidelines and the CDPH guidelines require students to stay out in isolation for a specific number of periods. And yet we got penalized for, for adhering to that. So I'm hoping that now that those guidelines have changed, we're going to see a better increase in our, in our ADA. And then boy, that 1% in 2526, uh, sure is something to keep an eye on.
Yes.
Yeah.
Anyone else comments? Ms. Pham?
Uh, yes, the, the students increase, are they mainly from TK? And spectrum.
Excellent question. While we have seen growth in TK, there is growth throughout the district, meaning it's a smattering of all grade levels and they keep coming, meaning we have seen an enrollment increase even since that CalPads date. So I will bring some updated enrollment numbers as well.
Ms. Santos?
Has there been a change since we've had a lot of CTE programs offered now? You know, is it to stay in school or come to school? You know, like your culinary and your beauty school and, um, they have fake programs and so forth.
Excellent question that I don't have an answer to, but I think one of the things we could potentially look at is our attendance percentages for those programs. What I can say is that our new cosmetology pathway filled up right away. And we have this amazing culinary arts facility that a ribbon cutting will be scheduled in the very near future that you'll have an opportunity to see. And when we add that or layer that on top of the other ag programs and things that we've already had in place, those programs, I, I think back to my, my, when I was in school, which classes did you look forward to? It was the ones where your hands were getting dirty doing something. At least that was me. And if you ask my dad, he would say the only reason why he ever went to school was because of the shop classes. And those CTE programs, as they come back and they grow, I, while I can't say it's directly tied to our, our growth in numbers, especially given the increase at our elementary levels, I can say I will look at our, our actual attendance in those different types of courses to see how it compares to our other general education classes.
And love those hairdressers. Well, one of the things we do know is that our, some of our increased enrollment comes actually from Central Coast New Tech High and PVA, where kids don't get those services. And you know, a lot of kids from Santa Maria were doing outreach there and stuff. So we are getting border crossings into CMR to go to our specialized schools.
And I think back in the day when we started with that, uh,
New Tech?
New Tech. That was our idea is to get the students who didn't fit the norm, but wanted to, you know, be above and they're, they're doing fantastic there.
Any other comments, Mr. Eichberger? Okay, this is a report and I need approval. So I'm looking for a motion on item number 14.
Move approval fiscal year 2023-2024 second interim financial report.
Second, go ahead. It's been moved by trustee Stewart and second by trustee Santos. Roll call vote please.
Stewart?
Aye.
Santos?
Yes.
Palm?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Kendall?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes. Item passes 6-0. We're moving along to item number 15, approval adoption of resolution A 2324-18, designating the Oceano Public Library for yon classroom use. Your starring role is still here.
I am still here. You haven't gotten rid of me yet. Uh, this is one of those fun items where we look at it and we go, wait a minute. Nothing is ever free. That's true. Even though the item before you is, uh, free building that we would be inheriting from the county, it, it did require some work for it to be a building that we would feel comfortable accepting. And I say that because the building had been there for 20 years. It did not fall under, uh, DSA or our regular building code as it relates to schools. However, it was required to be built under the, the county's guidelines for an actual library. Meaning when it was built, it was built for public occupancy as a library space. And when there was discussion with the district about the placement of the library, they found one that was a little bit more fitting for the community and they said, okay, let's make a deal, help us move into this new building. And then you can have where the current library is. We didn't just want to take it though. We had executive director Stinson and our facilities maintenance department look at the building before we had any quote unquote skin in the game, before we spent any money to see, is this a building that would be a value add to the district? After the building was, uh, you know, inspected, said, okay, this looks like it could have benefit to the district. However, it's that trust but verify. So we had an actual structural engineer look at the building and review it to make sure that it did meet our purposes for, uh, an auxiliary space that's not for regular coursework, meaning this is designed to be a space for staff, whether that is a staff workroom, staff lounge, it is, uh, it could be a potential learning space for our adults, meaning a PD room. Ultimately, it's not meant to become a classroom, if you will. It does, however, offer a good footprint as a bathroom and is in relatively good condition as a 20-year-old building. The structural engineer, uh, did say that it met the standards and provided a letter to us as a district. And the additional benefit was before we had that done, Sisk, who overrides our district property and liability, said, if you do these couple things, then we will ensure it after the board takes resolution. And I say ensure it, meaning we're a self-insured district. It is, they would cover it as part of our umbrella with the rest of our facility.
Does anyone on the board have any questions for Mr. Eichberger? Ms. Santos?
On something like that, does it have to be ADA compliant?
Uh, probably the ingress. I, I, I believe it was built to code when it was 20 years ago or 18 years ago, when they actually developed the path of travel to be a library, it would have had the ADA accessibility requirements at that time. Meaning it might not meet the current ADA codes, but where it's located, it does have the accessible ramp on the front entrance to the building.
Any other questions?
Yeah. Can you explain where it's located and does, is this going to require any new fencing or, you know, hardscaping, anything like that?
Excellent question. It sits right on, it's 17th Street. So right on the west side of the campus, it's currently fenced to where it's outside of the campus because it's not going to be accessible. Because it's not going to be accessible to students, I I don't see where we would have to change any current fencing. And because it does already have access from the street, there wouldn't be any ingress egress needs that we would have to address immediately.
It's directly below the parking lot, like.
Just south of the loophole through parking lot on that west side of campus.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I'm going to open up for public comment. Would anyone like to comment on this item? The Oceano Library. Seeing none, I'm going to close public comment, bring it back to the board for any comments or considerations. Seeing none, I do need approval. It's an adoption of a resolution A twenty-three, twenty-four dash eighteen.
I'll move approval for adoption of resolution A dash two-three, two-four dash eighteen. Designated the, designating the Oceano Public Library Building for non-classroom use.
Second.
It's been moved by Kendell, second by Mayor to approve item number fifteen. Roll call vote, please.
Kendell?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Stewart?
Aye.
Santos?
Yes.
Palm?
Yes.
One?
Yes. Item passes six zero. Okay, we're moving into the part of our agenda that's item scheduled for discussion, possible action. Item number one. A sixteen, sorry. Um, Mr. Eichberger?
Thank you, President Martin. Uh, the act that I was looking for, I'm going, gosh, I know I wrote it down somewhere. Here it is right here, per the Civic Center Act. Uh, ultimately, we have not addressed our facility's use fees. For a lot of years, meaning eighteen, since two thousand and six, we have not adjusted what we charge. Either our direct fee users, meaning our nonprofits, our uh, school loosely tied organizations. Or uh, anyone who's not charging what we like to call a quote unquote gate, meaning those not-for-profit free types of events. We haven't changed those. Nor have we changed those fair share rates, meaning if someone wanted to rent. The the gym and then charge a fee to have a little mini concert and they were going to charge ticket sales. We haven't changed any of those rates since two thousand and six. I know our rates have changed in terms of what we're paying, not only utilities, but also our employees. And when we think of the last uh, ten or eleven years. With a potential five percent salary increase on the books for later this evening. We've increased wages forty percent in an eleven-year period. And we haven't touched the rates that we're charging for custodial staff to clean those facilities. Or any other supports related to our facility use. So ultimately, this evening tonight. Uh, can be uh, addressed two ways. One, it can be uh, treated as a discussion item and a first read and. We can review the item, you can ask any questions and I can bring back additional information. Or if you are in agreement and feel that the fees have been adjusted. There have not been any substantive changes to this. It really has just been adjusting our fees that we're charging for our facilities that are being used.
Any questions from the board? Ms. Pham?
The fees that were back in two thousand and six compared to today, give us an example of. But those be.
Yeah.
An excellent question. Uh, so in terms of, I'll I'll look at it from two different angles. One, when we think about our custodial staff and we are, you know, having someone work as an overtime custodian. For our evening or Saturday events, we were charging. The overtime rate was uh, just under thirty dollars. Now our regular custodian rate is over thirty-five dollars. So we typically have charged the custodian only when we don't have a custodian on site already working. Meaning a Saturday when uh. I'll use youth basketball as an example. They rent AG's gym for a tournament. They pay for a custodian for that whole day. If it's a two-hour basketball practice, when our high school teams are not using the facility and we already have a custodian on site. We're not charging custodial fee. So the idea behind the facility's use fees are not meant to make a profit for the district. It's meant to basically break even on our expenditures. Now, the other fixed rates, those across the board, uh, the increase was approximately twenty-five percent.
Mr. Stewart?
Could you tell me who collects the fees? Are they, does the site collect them? Is the, is the district paid?
The district collects them.
Okay.
And Vicki in the business office, uh, can be a a little uh, bloodhound in terms of getting people to come pay. The process is the facility use fee packet gets filled out. And submitted to the facilities maintenance department for review. It has to be approved by the site principal first, meaning the site principal says, we don't have any conflicts on those days. And the facility can be used, we're not planning to do anything at that time. Once it's signed off by uh, the actual school site and the maintenance department that there's not any conflicts. Then the agreement would be approved, they use the facility and then afterwards they get billed by the business department.
Right, thank you. And the reason I ask is I just want to make sure that it's equitably applied throughout the whole district and there's no sort of. Side deal, for lack of a better word, right, yeah.
Excellent question.
The great data open for you.
And and this has been something that has been a continual review process and we have been, there has been a ton of cleanup. That has been done over the last ten years in terms of different side agreements and. As those go away, it it just, I don't want to say tightens up our control, but this is really. An attempt to make sure that it is equitable and that also the district is receiving the monies to, you know, rehab. Our soccer fields or uh, do maintenance on our basketball courts.
Thank you, thank you.
So I had a lot of questions ahead of time. Oh, I know, let's Mayor go first.
So it sounds like there's a master list, but my question is. Is there monitoring going on to see who is actually using our facilities? Who's propping up open gates? Because I suspect that's happening also. Um.
We're trying to catch as much of it as we can in terms of the unauthorized use. Uh, a lot of times the sites are letting us know that, hey, there's someone here. Uh, one of the ways, I I can speak from a volunteer experience. Um, I was the regional commissioner for AYSO for three years and. AYSO does what's called an in-kind donation to the district, meaning they cut a check for the fields that they use in terms of practice space. One of our teams showed up at a very close elementary to this location. And there was softball hitting softballs into the soccer practice field. And they said, what, we're using this area? Do you have a facility's use fee or a facility's use form on file? No. Then that's the discussion, well, you guys have to leave. We actually are paying for this facility use. And this space and we can't have you hitting softballs towards our eight-year-olds that are running around playing soccer. So oftentimes those, I don't want to call them abuses, let's call them unauthorized uses. They're they're caught when there's conflict between organizations or the school site notifies us.
So I had a lot of questions that ahead of time I called and talked about. Um, this is a perfect example of someplace that. We can really improve on for organizational excellence. For instance, it drives me wild when there's a form with such small spaces because I have really tidy writing and even I would struggle with that form. So I encourage Dr. Fosse to encourage you to put all forms in a fillable PDF or something similar. Where people can type and people can read. Um, one of the questions I wanted to add. And you can just take this and do what you want with it because I do want to improve this tonight because I want the fees to go forward, but. Um, on the form, it it says it very small, number four in the middle of the page, restrooms are mandatory. When I looked at like using a pool without restroom, no, you know, using a softball field without restroom, no, you know, everyone needs a restroom. And they have to pay for that custodian that's going to come and clean the restroom after they've used it. So it's very small and I recommend maybe change up your font, make it more bold, something, but restrooms are are mandatory for every. Facility you're going to borrow. Also on the supervising adult over twenty-one, it didn't say how many adults for how many kids. I would hate to think there'd be a one to one hundred ratio that we need to ask what the ratio of adults is to students. Um, I went through the form and I was informed that it's kind of a subjective. I mean, that we don't get to pick the cost and it's, there's a formula that's provided to us. So I got it because I was. Kind of concerned about the multipurpose room at an elementary school being at higher than, let's say, this room, which seemed kind of silly. Um, but all in all, I really like the idea that we are working and negotiating with the child-centered groups. In our community, ASO, youth basketball, all these groups. Because we do want them to use our facilities and we don't want them to feel that there's not a place for them in our community. And and let those groups get a cut rate and that we're asking them just to be responsible, give us back to the district for that. I'm I'm all for raising the rates. I just would like it to be, um. A little bit more laid out nicer for people.
I will definitely work uh, with my executive assistant on not only the the form fillable, but playing with the format. She uh, wasn't given cart launch uh, to totally tweak the form, but I can let her work her magic.
That someone wasn't because we have two different fonts under school, so that means that someone could try to jimmy something in there. Instead of really working and maybe give her cart launch to create her own page where it would actually be nicer and better. Um, anyways.
Get two questions down here?
Yeah. It it's not a question, it's more, we have to clarify, it's not for profit. It is willing to maintain.
Yes.
The the facilities so that the community can actually enjoy and we can maintain it.
And that our students come back to a clean site or that there's not damage done.
And the liability too, yes, yeah.
That's, that was another thing. I know during Little League and soccer too, we had to show proof of insurance.
Oh, it's.
It had, it had to be.
Still part of the form.
Yeah.
And I noticed you've upped the liability coverage, which I think is wise given what we know awards are these days for any kind of liability uh, issue.
And there was one last point that I was going to make that I don't want to gloss over. It's that idea of notification. How are our regular users going to know that this rate has changed? Executive Director Stenson has graciously uh, said he will make phone calls to all of our regular users. When the board takes action and let them know that it will be changing July one. That way, as they host their organizational board meetings, they can start planning for next year's expenditures, the way we would hope someone would do for us.
Awesome, that sounds good.
Well, kudos to whoever figured out that this was long overdue.
Yeah.
To do this. And um, I did notice a table which I mentioned to Dr. Fosse already at the bottom of the fee schedule.
Yeah, I did too.
Yeah, so probably those numbers are transposed, but.
It was, it was actually, I did get to the bottom of it, both of those were supposed to be forty-five. It has to do with the actual waste disposal fee. And one got updated, the other one didn't. So uh, it's already been updated on our digital version.
Perfect. Thank you. Good job.
Any other questions from the board on this? Okay, we're going to open up for public comment. Anyone in the audience want to public, have public comment on the facility use fees? Seeing none, we're going to bring it back to the board for comments, questions? Seeing none, I'll accept a motion.
If we do, excuse me, one second before you make the motion, trustee Santos. If we do make a motion on this tonight. Um, I suggest that we amend it and update that bottom fee to both reflect the forty-five. Um, at the bottom of the document so that the it's noted in the record.
Okay, great. So that is on page. Let me see. It was under the miscellaneous?
Yeah.
Yeah, very end.
Fee schedule.
Page five.
Page five, okay. Great.
Trash pickup, page five.
Um, okay, I'm making, I'm making a motion to approve the increase in facility use fees effective. From two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five with the corrections. That's stated.
Second.
It's been moved by Santos, second by Stewart, to approve the increase in facility use fees effective fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five. With the amended amount for the trash pickup on page five. Roll call vote, please.
Santos?
Yes.
Stewart?
Aye.
Kendell?
Yes.
Palm?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes, motion passes six zero. Sorry for taking so long and such a little thing, but it's been eighteen years. So if you thought about spreading out all that discussion over eighteen years, it's not so long.
It was valuable discussion to have, valuable discussion, but you haven't gotten rid of me yet.
Okay.
So I promise, this is my last item for this evening.
So item number seventeen, let me introduce it, is the public hearing, Assembly Bill twelve hundred, AB twelve hundred. Public Disclosure of Collective Bargaining Agreement between the CMR Unified School District and the CMR Unified Teachers Association.
Thank you, President Martin. Uh, what I have for you this evening is I'm going to call a partner item. Meaning this item is tied to the tentative agreement that Dr. Handy will be bringing as the next item. Ultimately, this is the public disclosure document that says we can afford the tentative agreement that will be coming next. As part of that process, the district per uh, produced or created an AB twelve hundred notice. That we provided to the County Office of Education and was reviewed by not only. Uh, the the business department at the county office, but was also signed off on by the county superintendent, Dr. Brisha. This item is a public hearing and does outline all of the costs associated with the tentative agreement. Not only the salary, but any other uh, things that are tied to the provisions that could also potentially have money.
Does anyone from the board have any questions for Mr. Eichberger? No? Does anyone from the audience like to make public comment on this item, the tentative agreement for our teachers association?
That would be the public hearing, so you need to.
Public, oh, excuse me, I gotta open the public hearing. Sorry about that. This is my, Mr. Stewart's right next to me. So I'm going to open the public hearing at eight twenty-five. And if anyone from the audience would like to have public comment on this item, we would welcome your comments. Seeing none, I'm going to close the public comment almost eight twenty-six and bring it back to the board. Um, for number eighteen. Okay. Uh, number eighteen is the motion that uh, is the tandem with the public hearing, item number seventeen. Uh, I'm looking for a motion.
Reduce.
Okay, excuse me.
Okay, I'm sorry. To clarify, this is agenda item eighteen. Okay, um, so the LUCY MR Unified School District and the LUCY MR Unified Teachers Association reached a tentative agreement on March sixth of this month. Of this year, sorry, uh, to close negotiations for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Before I um, expand on on some of the key points of that tentative agreement, I want to. Outline that I really appreciate that both teams came to the table and came to the room. Um, seeking to understand on some really key issues and there was some really great conversation that didn't necessarily result in any changes, but. Um, is progress in our journey together, uh, as we continue forward. Um, especially in the area of uh, collaboration and professional development. So I wanted to highlight that and for any. You representatives here tonight, but I still think it's important to note. The tentative agreement was ratified by LMUTA membership on March fourteenth. And the full tentative agreement is attached, but I'm going to highlight a summary of the results and changes. So specifically in article five, uh, we expanded the definition of family for purposes of catastrophic leave. In article six, hours of work, we clarified the work year for high school athletic directors from a hundred and eighty-four workdays to two hundred and fourteen days. And memorialize the existing memorandum of understanding from two thousand nine for speech and language pathologists. Uh, to receive a stipend of eight thousand dollars. Both take changes, excuse me, both changes take effect uh, beginning July one, twenty twenty-four. Article nine, class size, updated staff ratios for Pacific View Academy to thirty-four. To one for supervising teachers, twenty-eight to one for those serving as supervising teachers and teachers of record. And a hundred to one for those serving as teachers of record only for all subjects except for world language, which is at fifty to one. If the board has questions, I can explain a little bit for. which is at fifty to one. If the board has questions, I can explain a little bit further. Article fourteen, salaries, uh, we're increasing the salaries by five percent. That was outlined in uh, the report by Mr. Eichberger. Um, and, um, increasing credit, service credit for new hires by one year to, um, to meet fifteen years. So a new district come, a new employee coming into our district as a teacher will get fifteen years worth of credit from another district. Article seventeen, the term of agreement, of course, this extends through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. So the parties also mutually agreed to non-substantive changes throughout the sunshine articles, uptick language and correct formatting. Um, as Mr. Eichberger just shared, the AB twelve hundred public disclosure document detailing the costs um, was submitted to San Luis Obispo County Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Brusha, and was approved. And so the board approval is requested on this tentative agreement that took, I believe, a record-breaking three days or three, three sessions. So, um, again, kudos to both teams coming and being efficient and, and prepared. And so we ask that you approve that.
Any questions for Dr. Handy on this? Open it up to public comment from the audience. Anyone like to have public comment on the tentative agreement? Seeing none, I'm gonna close it, public comment, bring it back to the board for comments. Mr. Stewart?
Just a quick one to elevate my, my thanks to both, uh, teams in the bargaining session for their professionalism, their commitment to collaboration and their really, their commitment to unders, understand, to seek to understand. So, well done.
And Ms. Mayor got in, so.
Yeah, NASA observer, uh, thank you. Uh, it was a lot of really good discussion from both sides and positive most of the time and the questions were answered and it's changed a lot since I've been on the board. Just the whole, um.
For the better.
For the better, for much for the better. Everybody starts off. Um, I feel with a different level of trust going on from the get-go, which is a huge improvement.
Any other comments from the board? Well, I want to thank Mayor, oh, this can help.
I just wanted to say, um, uh, looking back, I think on the salary schedule page where it, it it shows the increases that have been made over the years, the last you know, eleven, twelve years. And, um, you know, having been on at the, on the other side of the table for LMUTA, I know how difficult and fraught this can be sometimes. And I appreciate, I do appreciate the professionalism of everybody and I think that, um, I'm proud of what we as a district have done, um, over those years of more than forty percent increase. And especially if you look at, you know, there's a, there was a big chunk of time where there weren't any. And, um, that was really difficult for employees at that time. So, um, anyway, I commend, um, everyone involved and I'm glad that we can move forward.
Um, and thank you, uh, Ms. Mayor for sitting in on those. And I appreciate you donating your time to just observe. It's very hard for me not to say things and observe only. So I appreciate that, and Ms. Mayor is willing to do that on our behalf. Um, and I really liked the fifteen-year, um, you know, we wanna capture, you know, a family wants to move here and you have an excellent educator from someplace else, we wanna pay them their due and, um, open them into our LUCYMR family. All right, I'm looking for a motion.
Move approval tentative agreement between the LUCYMR Unified Teachers Association and the LUCYMR Unified School District dated March sixth, twenty twenty-four.
Second. It's been moved by Stewart, second by Kendell. Roll call vote, please. Stewart.
Aye.
Kendell.
Yes.
Santos.
Yes.
Baum.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes.
Martin. Yes. Motion passes six oh to approve the tentative agreement between the CMR Unified Teachers Association and the CMR Unified School District dated March sixth, twenty twenty-four. Okay, we're moving on to item number nineteen. Approval initial proposal for collective bargaining from the CMR Unified School District to the California School Employees Association, CSEA, chapter two seventy-five for the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-six successor negotiations. Dr. Handy?
Thank you. This is the eighth time you've essentially seen this language in this memo. So with President Martin's permission, I'll just summarize if I may. So we have sunshine to articles. There's a process of making sure that our public has an opportunity to speak to what is going to be negotiated. So this is the district's, um, second, um, and final essential sunshine for the public to comment on what we are proposing to negotiate with California School Employees Association and it's chapter two seventy-five. So board approval is requested to adopt the CMR Unified School District's initial proposal for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-six successor negotiations with the California School Employees Association, chapter two seventy-five.
Anyone have any questions for Dr. Handy? Seeing none, I'm gonna open it up to the audience for public comment. Seeing no movement, I'm gonna close the public comment of the audience, bring it back to the board for comments. This is the second we've seen this, so it's not any shock to us. So, um, I'm looking for a motion then for approval.
Move approval, initial proposal for collective bargaining from the LUCYMR Unified School District to the California School Employees Association, CSEA, chapter number two seventy-five for the twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-six successor negotiations.
Second. It's been moved by Stewart, second by Mayor. Roll call vote, please. Stewart?
Aye.
Mayor?
Yes.
Kendell?
Yes.
Santos?
Yes.
Baum?
Yes.
Martin? Yes. Motion passes six oh to approve the initial proposal for CSEA. Item number twenty, approval, school facilities funding and mitigation agreement to between the CMR Unified School District and the Dana Reserve LLC. Um, I, we're gonna have a report on this and I know there are people here that wanna speak on this. If you haven't yet turned in a card, please do so, so I can gauge how much time I can give you.
Thank you, President Martin. Um, just wanna highlight the fact that after the board packet was created on Friday and distributed and posted online, um, there are a couple of changes and those new packets are located in the back of the room and then you also have them inside of your folder. Um, the changes were, um, an addition of the property description and then a few typos were corrected. So, um, if you haven't seen it, uh, make sure you have that. And then, um, this mitigation agreement represents the district's due diligence and working with a developer to mitigate, um, all anticipated costs related to the development. Um, the agreement is not, uh, the district or the board voicing support or opposition, um, to the project. Um, it is just, uh, the board and the district working to ensure that the costs are covered, um, and mitigated um, so that we can continue to house the students that we're anticipating being generated by, by the project. Um, prior to Senate Bill fifty, counties and cities could condition approval and direct developers to mitigate the costs, um, with school districts. After SB fifty, that was no longer, um, within their authority. And it's important to highlight to, to note as we look and consider this, um, this document before you tonight. Um, SB fifty also established what school districts could require, um, from, from developers. Um, either statutorily authorized level one fees, um, set by the state allocation board, um, that the board must adopt, um, in order to levy those on developers. Or level two and level three fees, um, which LUCYMR is not eligible for. Um, in order to apply, um, these fees, um, just like you did during the last board meeting, um, we increased our, um, level one fees to five dollars and seventeen cents, um, which the board took action on. So currently, um, school districts cannot request anything beyond those fees um, from, or currently direct, um, anything beyond these fees to, to developers, but we can request um, that those fees be augmented, which is what we have done. We have engaged in conversations as soon as the developer notified, um, the school district, we began to engage in conversation about, um, the potential impact and student generation rates um, on the district. And so despite those statutory requirements limiting um, the developers to only level one fees, um, the Dana Reserve has agreed to provide additional financial contributions to help mitigate the project's impacts. And I'm gonna outline those for you tonight and just summarize, um, what's inside of the document in front of you. Um, so this is a tiered mitigation, um, fee structure um, that addresses different types of housing units within the development and anticipates on the types of hu- housing units that may come, um, from the proposed development and potential changes down the road. Uh, because it's still in the approval po- process, um, the Board of Supervisors will, um, consider um, the approval of the development on, um, April twenty-third. So standard residential units, um, per this agreement will incur a fee equivalent to this, um, the then um, state allocation board's level one fees without additional board approval. Um, with an additional sixty-eight cents per square foot. And that's an important, um, increase that, that we would receive in this mitig, mitigation agreement. Um, if there are active older adult units, um, there's approximately four hundred and seventeen units that are, um, targeted either for um, age restrict, restrictions by deed, um, or, um, if they're not restricted, um, by deed, um, there's a possibility that they just may target, um, active adults without families. Um, those units would still be, um, subject to the level one fees, the current level one fees at the time. But they would not be charged the additional sixty-eight, um, cents per, per household, um, because the student generation level, um, would not be there in those active adult units. In order to ensure that that would happen, um, if that were the case, um, that there is an agreement to share the marketing materials and the, um, the charter of the merchant builder, um, to show that they're targeting active adults and not families, um, in that case. Um, if they are senior restricted units, um, by deed, then per state law, they are subject to the commercial rate, which is somewhere along. Go ahead.
No, just lot, lot, lot lower. I just kinda.
It, it is a lot lower. It is a lot lower than level one. It's something around sixty-eight, um, cents, uh, for the commercial rate, um, versus five dollars and seventeen cents. So it is significantly lower. Um, and, and the thought behind that is it's not, it's not generating an impact on the district. Um, and then, uh, the developers also agreed, per the district's request, um, to advance, um, the, the fee payments of five hundred thousand dollars so that we could begin um, to do the work on the necessary architectural designs and facility assessments, um, for the building. Um, that is not on top of the, the level, uh, one fees and the, um, mitigated rate that is coming from those, those fees. And then, um, the developers also agreed for additional ingress and egress improvements um, to our, one of our school sites that would be impacted by, um, the students coming to that school site. Um, and so and, uh, we assi, we did an assessment, um, Executive Director Stenson, um, helped determine that that would be around um, roughly a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, um, to improve the, um, drop-off and pickup area, said simply. Um, and that is the summary of what, um, is in the uh, mitigation agreement before you tonight. Um, I'm happy to entertain any questions at this point.
Questions from the board? Mr. Stewart?
Dr. Fossett, I, I just wanna make sure that I, I understand this clearly. That what's being, what you're asking or the board's being asked tonight to approve is not an endorsement of the project itself, but really the, to approve the fee structure that's gonna mitigate any impact that if the development is approved by the Board of Supervisors will have on the district. Is that correct?
That is exactly right.
Right. Um, and then I wanna, I wanna make sure I have my head wrapped around SB fifty as well. Cause I know there was a time where the Board of Supervisors, as you said, could direct the developer to go back and work with the district. That's no longer the case. Right? So it's in our best interest to mitigate this ahead of, uh, while there's an incentive for the developer to, to work on this mitigation.
That is correct and well stated.
Great, yeah, thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Santos? What schools would it have?
So, right now, the development is zoned for Lang Elementary School. Um, Lang Elementary School does not have a footprint to, um, house a build-out. So we're gonna need to at some point, um, redraw the boundaries and direct the students to um, either Dana Elementary School, Napomo Elementary School, or a combination of the two. Yes, to be determined.
So would that make a big difference since we all represent districts? That, throw that into it?
It has nothing to do with trustee area boundaries.
So I have a question about the additional improvements, the hundred and seventy-five thousand to be contributed by the developer for construction improvements for onsite pickup and drop-off. Is that for at the schools or for designated bus stops in the development?
That is for at the schools. So we will need to carve out, um, additional drop-off lanes so that those vehicles don't stop the flow of traffic. Um, we will also require collaboration with, um, the county's Parks and Recs Department to open up the north side of the county regional park. And, um, we have been in contact with, um, the Board of Supervisors with that, that request as well.
Yeah, cause Lang and Dan, I mean, those three elementaries all have pretty dangerous traffic situations without any more kids.
It's very true.
Any other questions from the board? Okay. Right, so if anyone else wanna hand up any speaker cards? Seeing none, I'm gonna, I have five speaker cards. We limit our public comment to three minutes. I'm gonna take you the order so we don't waste a lot of time in the ups and downs. First is Caesar Vasquez, then Leila Zavala, then Ara, Ara Castello, then Carmen Morales, and then Stephen Va- Vining. Oh, Caesar, come on up to the podium. You have three minutes. Uh, Dr. Handy has this little stoplight thing you can kinda, don't let it bug you, but when it gets to yellow, it means to wrap it.
Hello, my name is Cesar Vasquez and I am one of those students from Santa Maria in UTEC. And I am a co-founder of the Central Coast Student Coalition. I'm here to speak on behalf of the mitigation agreement. I intended to come here to speak on behalf of the CCSC. After a lot of thought, I'm not here a part of the organization, but I'm here as a part of the future that I'll have to live. I'm here behalf on the youth of your kids, of my peers and of my friends. I'm here to protect that future. We want to thank you for doing what you can regarding this deal. But I also want to remind everyone the harm this development will cause, not just to Napomo, not just to Napomo, but to the future of the district's infrastructure. The schools aren't built to hold these students, to transport these students. No one wants to go to a school where your playground is replaced by a portable. I want to strongly advise every single one of you to fight the good fight and stop the development as proposed from happening. Instead, fight to have the community map implemented. If you all don't fight today, I promise, I promise you all, your kids will be fighting for climate restoration for the rest of their lives. Thank you.
Thank you, Caesar. Next is Leila Zavala.
Hello, my name is Leila Zavala and I'm also here as a founder of the Central Coast Student Coalition, as well as a senior at Central Coast New Tech High. I'm also here to speak in regards to the mitigation agreement between LUCYMR and the Dana Reserve Limited Liability Corporation. While we acknowledge financial pressures, we cannot overlook the irreversible harm this project will inflict on our students and the environment. Asthma rates in Napomo have increased by a hundred percent in just four years. And this proposed project threatens to exasperate air and noise pollution, presenting major health, health risks for our community. Additionally, it is crucial to note that development also impacts federally endangered species, further underscoring environmental implications. We urge you to, to support us in pushing for the community map, which prioritizes our well-being and the preservation of our environment. The community map will ensure a safer environment for schools and students by reducing construction time, air pollution, traffic and overcrowded and under-resourced schools. Please come talk to us if you're interested in learning more. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Leila. Ms. Castello?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Erica Castello. I'm a graduate of Oceanview, Paulding and Napomo High School. And I'm here today with the Central Coast Student Coalition, speaking in regards to the mitigation agreement between LUCYMR and the Dana Reserve LLC. To mitigate means to lessen the gravity of a mistake, to make it less severe. Which is why we are here in the first place, because rather than collaborate with the district to build a development which meets all of our needs, the plan as proposed effectively forces the district to make the best of a bad situation. I'm sorry you are in this position, facing a minimum of four million dollars of non-negotiable deficit. And I commend the superintendent for working to protect the students and families of LUCYMR and for securing some semblance of compensation for the impending destruction. Because no matter how much money is exchanged, there is no justice in this deal. If there's anything. High schooler said at our workshop last weekend, there is quote, "No point in building homes if we do not protect the land." He is right. He is right. And there's no way we can be of service to the community if we do not collaborate with the community. That is why we are advocating for the community map, an alternative plan that prioritizes the forest and prioritizes the health and well-being of the very students this board is committed to support. Hopefully, we can work with the developer to make this plan a reality. I know he's here tonight. Please consider.
Thank you, Ms. Castello. Next is Carmen Morales, board.
Good evening. I'm a retired licensed family nurse practitioner and a public health nurse, and I live in Nopomo. And I'm concerned with the significant and unavoidable impacts that this project will, how it will affect the Luciemar students as a result. And other air pollutants will be increased. All of these things contribute to more air pollution and more risk to students' health. Slow County has one of the highest asthma rates in California, and the rates are on the rise. People of color are disproportionately affected. Luciemar's demographics closely mirror Nopomo's population diversity, with forty-eight point two percent Hispanic Latino, two point four percent Pacific Islander, point six percent Black, point three percent Native Peoples, and point one percent. School emergency, and sometimes it becomes a matter of life and death. It places a burden on staff and teachers as they deal with students needing their inhalers. Often, these medications have side effects, such as headaches, dizziness, nausea, and excitability. Impaired learning and missed school days are often the result, and students cannot reach their full potential, and the district loses money when students are absent. While the developer is making significant financial contributions to help mitigate the impact from the influx of new students generated by this development, remember that they have a huge vested financial interest in completing this project. And it is my professional opinion that putting profits before people, and these are little people, who cannot advocate them for themselves, is wrong. It is environmental injustice, and it is social injustice, and dare I say the R-word, structural racism. Because until recently, our residents had no input in the processes that affected the development coming as far along as it did. So I believe that Luciemar as a school district is dedicated to excellence and in education, and I hope that you take a stand for fairness, equity, inclusion when making your decision. Thank you.
Thank you. And then Stephen Vines?
Yes, my name is Reverend Stephen Vines, and I'm living in Nopomo and been in Nopomo for a while. Our family's been here since the late forties. And I'd like to talk about the process, you know, planning to fail. I mean, failing the plan is planning to fail, and that's really what the issue that we really are here to discuss. In the sense that, you know, when you're going to do a project that's going to really impact the community, the community should have some, you know, input. And the problem here, and the school district should have some input, you know, before the process and, and as you were saying, that even though you're going to be able to mitigate the, you know, the process, but if you don't have a ten-year plan, a plan of how you're going to deal with development before development happens, so the school district can make the adjustments that they can deal with, how they're going to deal with the transfer of the students, and, and so it doesn't impact the teaching and, and, and cause traffic issues and the whole issue. And that's the issue that we're under here, that we have a county that says that, oh, we're going to make decisions, forget the community. We're, we're just going to go in the corner, forget the school district, forget traffic, forget all the other, you know, issues, the impact in the community, and we're going to be worried about making cash money. And, and, and we're going to push it through, we're going to make the school district, make adjustments so that it's not going to create the best environment for its students because, because of the way in which, behold, should we say, the planning department let a project like this come upon a community that has all these impacts, and the community really didn't have the, have the, should we say, input. But luckily, our community came up with an ultimate plan. And the school district really to sit down with our organization so that we can go over the plan, so we can be on the same page, so that we can create a ten-year plan so that you, that you can be better with, you know, your planning as far as for the growth of the school district, and the community can deal with a plan as far as for the impact of growth in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vines. Would anyone else in the audience like to speak on this item? We're talking about the approval of the school facilities funding and mitigation agreement between the CMR Unified School District and the Dana Reserve LLC. Come to the podium, please.
Glass, and I'm concerned that this issue is being framed in the present without a long-range view of the future. What, what's going to happen in Nopomo? This is one development now, but what about within two decades? Won't, won't there be more students who need education? So instead of putting new infrastructure into the current, current schools, what about looking at long-range ideas? Like building a couple new schools that will accommodate the Dana Reserve project, but also the new future projects that might be coming down the pike? So I encourage you to have a longer-range view of the needs for making decisions. Not just this one project, but open up the view of what's going to happen in the next couple decades. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Glass. Anyone else have any public comment for us on this item, item number twenty? Please come forward.
I hope it's short enough. My name is Dana Whitner. I am a resident here in Nopomo. I have a lot of objections to the project of the Dana Reserve, but that's not my purpose tonight. The mitigation fees are admirable. I understand why you would want them to supplement your budgets, pay for a lot of additional expenses. But I think what's really of concern is that temporary buildings aren't going to do it. Eventually, you're going to have to get a building. And the building will have to be funded with a school bond. And there is a lot of us old folks that live here in Nopomo who don't have children in your system. And I don't know that you're going to have an easy time getting a school bond approved. So I'm asking you to realize that the developer is basically trying to garner your approval by having these fees. So think about it, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Whitner. Would anyone else in the audience like to speak on this item, item number twenty, the mitigation agreement? Being done, I don't see any movement. I'm going to close public comment and bring it back to the board for discussion and comments.
I would like to comment.
Okay.
The Dana Reserve project is in my trustee area, and I'm very familiar with the aspects of this development as proposed and the desires of the community members who have worked diligently to try to find a compromise solution. There's nothing about this that is easy or fair. I hate the idea that the school district is put in the position of having to advocate for age-restricted housing, which I consider to be discriminatory towards families because doing so reduces the number of potential students and thus the impact on the district. I hate the idea that after years of prudently and faithfully administering district resources to improve our school sites and invest in infrastructure, we may find ourselves behind the eight ball again with no recourse but to build classrooms on playgrounds to accommodate an influx of new students from one of the largest developments in our county's history. What this agreement does not and cannot do is address the underlying concerns that have brought together a diverse coalition in the community to demand a win-win solution. This coalition of Nopomo's citizens are asking that this project move forward in a way that is respectful to the community, respectful to the environment, respectful to the educational needs of children in our district, respectful to the first responders who have told us the infrastructure is inadequate to provide for community safety, respectful to the Native people who have spoken of, of their cultural heritage here. And in this I stand, I want to be clear that I stand in solidarity with my community. I spent time yesterday discussing this issue with Dr. Fawcett and district legal counsel, and I, I, I understand the necessity of this agreement. I think we made some, some changes that were helpful. So I, I will support this agreement because my job here is a fiduciary one. My vote is in no way an endorsement of this project, and I hope my fellow board members will concur that nothing about this agreement should be construed as approval of the project as proposed. Thank you.
Anyone else like to make?
I agree, I agree totally. This vote has nothing to do with supporting the project. This vote has to do with protecting our school district and making sure that we have the possibility of having the funds to take care of our kids. It doesn't support the project.
Anyone else like to comment? Let's see Stuart.
I just want to thank Dr. Fawcett. I know there were, there were hours of conversations to get to this agreement and to get to a point where you feel comfortable bringing this agreement to us for approval. So I appreciate the conversations that both sides had to get to where we are, to get to an agreement you feel good presenting to us.
Well, I want to just say thank you, Dr. Fawcett, also, and to Mr. Tompkins for working together to create a mitigation agreement that we can both abide by and live with. I do want to thank the citizens that came out tonight to speak about the project and enlighten us a little bit more about the project. And I concur with Dr., with Ms. Candell that we have no say on the project. The only thing we can say is we want to take care of our, for our future students who will be at our school sites. So what we're saying tonight is we're going to take care of our kids, and I know that's what you want us to do. As far as the approval of the project, that goes on to the Board of Supervisors, and I'm assuming you will all be there in attendance to talk to them as well as you did tonight. So thank you for that. Ms. Santos?
I would just like to commend the students for standing up for what you believe in. I, I think it's about time that the younger generation starts standing up and speaking their voice and letting people know how they feel. I appreciate that very much. So be proud of yourselves. And I, I too have to agree with Ms. Candell. I know she's done her homework, and she has spoken with more than one person, and I, I'm in agreement with the rest of you.
Any other comments from the board? Being done, I'm looking for a motion for item number twenty.
I move approval of school facilities funding and mitigation agreement between the CMR Unified School District and Dana Reserve LLC.
Second. It's been moved by trustee Stuart, second by trustee mayor. Roll call vote, please. Stuart?
Aye.
Mayor?
Yes.
Candell?
Yes.
Santos?
Yes.
Palm?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
The motion passes approval of the school facilities funding and mitigation agreement between the CMR Unified School District and the Dana Reserve LLC. Okay, we're going to move on to item number twenty-one, which is our regular march towards revising some of our board policies. We've been doing this for months now, and tonight we have them on complaints.
Yes, and we will continue doing these in the future because there are regular updates from CSBA and changes in law and changes in practice, quite frankly, to reflect those changes, too. And so tonight, before you, is the first reading of a board policy, several administrative regulations, an exhibit focused on complaints and course of study. This is the first read. We're not asking for any action, and we hope that you had the opportunity to read them. Thank you, President Martin.
Any questions for Dr. Fawcett on this item? It's a first reading only. Any public comment on items number twenty-one, first reading board policies? Being done, bring it back to the board. Comments from the board? Dr., Mr. Stewart?
I'll be, I'll take doctor. I, I just want to highlight the seriousness of mental health issues that are affecting our students right now and the inclusion of all this mental health language to sort of recognize what, what an impact this has. So I'm, I'm grateful we're updating our board policies to reflect what we're actually seeing on our campuses.
Okay, this is the first reading only, does not require a vote, so we're going to move on to item number twenty-two, which is our action, student expulsion on student discipline case number twenty-three, twenty-four dash zero, twenty-nine and twenty-three, twenty-four dash zero, three, four. Thirty-nine and thirty-four.
Okay, I would like to move the fact-finding hearing conducted by administrative panel. One, the Board of Trustees finds there is cause to expel student case number two-three dash two-four dash two, zero, two-nine from all schools in the district for violation of Education Code Sections four, eight, nine, zero, zero, A, one. Two, it is further moved that the board adopt the findings of fact, conclusions, alternative education program referral, rehabilitation plan, and readmission review data, date as set forth in the March sixth, two thousand twenty-four recommendation of the Administrative Review Panel. Three, it is further moved that this order of expulsion be suspended for the second semester subject to the conditions set forth in the agreement, and that the authority to determine whether student case number two-three dash two-four dash two, zero, two-nine is in compliance with, with such conditions and to revoke the suspended enforcement of this order without further hearing be delegated to the superintendent's designate.
Second. It's been moved by Candell, second by Santos. Roll call vote, please. Candell?
Yes.
Santos?
Yes.
Palm?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Stuart?
Aye.
Martin?
Yes. Motion passes six, zero. Item, student case O three, four.
I move agreement and stipulation for immediate expulsion. One, the Board of Trustees finds there is cause to expel student case number two-three dash two-four dash zero, three, four from all schools in the district for violation of Education Code Sections four, eight, nine, zero, zero, C, and four, eight, nine, zero, zero, L. It is further moved that the board adopt the recitals, agreements, rehabilitation plan, and readmission review date as set forth in the March twelfth, two thousand twenty-four agreement and stipulation for immediate expulsion.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Candell, second by trustee Stuart. Roll call vote, please. Candell?
Yes.
Stuart?
Aye.
Santos?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Motion passes six, zero. We've come to the place on our agenda for public comment on items not on the agenda. If anyone would like to speak to the board about items under our jurisdiction, please come forward. Seeing no movement other than from Linda Pierce, we're going to close public comments. If anyone would like to speak to the board about items under our jurisdiction, please come forward. Seeing no movement other than from Linda Pierce, we're going to close public comments, and, and we're going to adjourn our meeting till we meet again on April twenty-third,